Just a mutt.
Are we ready?
It's a mutt. It's from Aruba.
Oh.
Where's this?
I'm gonna be ringing your phone, because we just started the process.
Oh, yeah?
Yeah, my youngest just turned five and...
I'll take a motion to open the meeting.
I'll move.
Moved by Ms. Pennington?
Second.
Trista, all in favor?
Aye.
Please stand with the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Moment of silence. Thank you. On behalf of myself and the school committee members, I would like to thank E.V. Cam, as always, for streaming this meeting live tonight. Thank you. And our first guest is Mr. Peter Spigot.
And Dave.
And Dave. Dave Cronin as well.
I didn't know you were together. I'm sorry. And Dave Cronin.
Dave, I'll just kinda, yeah, start out. So, Peter Spigot Jr., Board of Selectmen. I've been working with the Arts Council as one of the liaisons. I have, me and David sat down, oh boy, probably three or four months ago, and started talking about the Arts Council. And a little to my knowledge, I didn't realize how much they actually do in town and the type of help they need. Arts reaches out to many different types of programs, from drama to literature to dance. And what we're trying to do, as we go to a lot of the meetings like this one, is just give a little bit of update on the Arts Council and what they can provide to the schools, as well as to the community. One of my big pitches is to not only find things to help develop the town financially, but culturally as well. And the Arts Council is a big part of that. So what I asked Dave to do tonight was just give the school committee an update on exactly what the different types of grants they have, whether they be federal or local, and the processes of how that's done, and some of the things that it can provide to the school system, just as kind of an update. And hopefully, as you've done for the last three or four times, I'll let you let them...
Hello, Dave Cronin. So the East Bridgewater Arts Council is sort of an interesting niche. We're members of the Massachusetts Cultural Council, so we all sit on the Cultural Council, and we are funded by the state as well as our town. So we get two sets of funding every year that we use for primarily local enrichment, really. The state grant cycle was a little funny this year. It got extended and actually ended on the 15th of this month. Typically, it ends early in October. But the state grant monies are used for any program or application that would benefit local, the local town. So we get things from requests for live music performances, STEM night performances at the high school. We get stuff going as far as the Brockton Orchestra, who came and performed here at the high school. And we try to, we try to, we sort of try to pick. We get around $7,000 yearly per funding from the state that we can grant out during the grant cycle. And then the town has separate funds that they similarly almost match the state that we can grant out with less restriction and a little more freedom. So we've done things like, we fund the arts show, the all-school arts show, or the district-wide arts show that happens at the high school. We fund that every year, supplies. We'll fund, we make like gifts and donations, so we help fund the photography program at the high school here. So we donated digital cameras, digital printers. And we really wanna help in any way we can, whether it's students who are looking to create works of art, local artists who want to make things in the area, have programs. We fund a lot of stuff that gets, a lot of programs at the library. So we're just really kinda here to help and bolster the community in any way we can. That's about it. Thank you. Yeah?
I think you're one of the first people to come in in a while, so we just want to help. We don't want any? No. We wanna help. That's very, thank you. And, you know, we do appreciate everything you do. I mean, the art, the spring art show is tremendous. Tonight, we have STEM night down at the Mitchell School. It's online right now, so you can participate if you picked up your bags at the Mitchell School. And everything that the Arts Council has done has been just super for us at my end and gaining out and seeing what's going on. So thank you very much. And thanks for coming in tonight, Mr. Spigot. We do appreciate everything that the town does for us, and we appreciate what your council does.
Thank you.
That was gonna be my question, is if you're involved, asking if you're involved in the STEAM night. They just had it at Mitchell tonight. That was a phenomenal event. I was helping my son out with it earlier today.
We weren't involved in this one, no. But we've funded and brought in like the professor who came in at the high school a couple times, and so...
Great.
Yeah, and if people are interested in applying for grants, you know, the state cycle is over, like I said, but if people are looking to do things, like they wanna do an outdoor project, they wanna, you know, make a painting, public art, or performance, they can just email the eastbridgewaterartscouncil@gmail.com. eastbridgewaterartscouncil@gmail.com, and we'd be happy to help. Take a look and see what we can do to support people. Thank you for everything you do for the kids. We appreciate it. Thank you.
Thank you.
Let's finish up by saying that, you know, Dave's been a real leader in this role of the Arts Council, but what they really need, which is funny to me, because of a lot of the departments that I see, to Liz's point, they need something, and usually it's funding. Arts Council is on the other scope, end of the scope, where they need bodies. They need people to, you know, step up and help. We have got some contacts from, which music that you haven't heard from? Mr. Ponti, thank you. Mr. Ponti has agreed to come to a meeting and join and start talking about doing some music stuff. You know, like I said, drama, literature, anything that would bring in the arts. We'd love to see them come out and start to work with this group. It's a small group right now, roughly three or four individuals. And in order to get to where we're hoping to go, we're looking for obviously a lot more involvement, you know, reaching out to, David or myself, I think, would put that in the right direction. But I appreciate you giving us a couple minutes. I also told Kate Byrne I'd bring up, this year is our eighth annual food drive at the Central School. It will be held Wednesday, November 18th, 1:00 to 3:30. Items, Central School parents, or, you know, anyway, really, this year, because it will be held outside, can be dropped off from 1:00 to 3:30, and 5:30 to 7:00. On Thursday, 19th, again, 1:00 to 3:30, and 5:30 to 6:30. Items can be dropped off. The school, in the past, has worked in classroom participation, kind of a contest. This year, they'll work as a group together, and hopefully will be successful. Both food pantries in East Bridgewater could really use the help, so we didn't wanna pass up the opportunity and...
Any particular kinds of food that are more helpful? Canned goods?
Yeah, there's been a list. So I think it's gonna, I think the notices went home to the children that, in the Central School, but it's also posted in their flyer, as well as, it's all over social media, as much as we could get it out there. So two days, we'll collect as many items as we can, and I'll be there Friday to work with the school to deliver them to the two food pantries here in town, so...
Thank you for all this. This is great.
Thank you.
Any comments?
Thank you.
All right. Reports of the spending committees. Excuse me. So first reading of recommended changes to school policy, file BDA, School Committee Organizational Meeting Policy. So this is a proposed revision to our organizational policy that would limit the position of the chair to two consecutive one-year terms. Any comments or feedback from the policy committee, subcommittee?
Yeah, so Ellen, Trista, and I met to go over this. Ellen actually reached out to Jerry Kuchar from the MSC about the policy, and with his comments, you know, they just said that the MSC doesn't recommend adding the language just because there are stopgaps in place, you know, our town elections to, you know, for the town to replace elected officials as they see fit, and then the annual election for us to elect a chair. And so our discussion was just that, you know, we were concerned that perhaps if there was someone that was capable and willing to serve as chair, and that they had, you know, in their third consecutive term, that it may lead to someone who may not be able to commit that time to taking on that role. So our recommendation was not to revise the policy and to leave as is, but Ellen and Trista, any other comments?
So it did not advance out of subcommittee?
It did not.
Then it is a moot point at this point, then. Okay, thank you. Update from Mrs. Pennington on MAS-C resolutions.
The MAS-C resolution, so everything got approved except number, so the fifth resolution was approved but with a minor change, and the change is to remove, quote unquote, "through the enactment of progressive tax legislation." That was the only small piece of the sentence or paragraph that was removed.
Which resolution was that? I don't have them in front of me.
Five. Five is increased federal support and stimulus funding for public K to 12 education.
Gotcha.
And so they just removed "through the enactment of progressive tax legislation." And they just left it as is, other than that. And the only other update, so that was it for the resolutions. The only other update I have is from the policy subcommittee. So we met, when did we meet? Just recently, last week? I don't know, last week's been a blur. So we have nine policies to bring to the next subcommittee, to the next committee meeting. Just, there were minor updates for those, so...
These are updates that were passed down from MAS-C?
Yeah, yeah.
Okay. So those will be given at the next meeting for our first reading?
Yes.
Okay.
And I'll make sure that Barbara has them, or Amanda will make sure that Barbara has them.
Thank you. Superintendent's evaluation. I asked for this to be put on air, because, you know, we're now, we're into the meat of the year now, and, you know, hopefully beyond the initial hiccups and, you know, craziness of opening under COVID. And so we did, you know, leave the issue last spring of the superintendent's evaluation. It was kinda left open-ended for obvious reasons, because of the shutdown in March, but it is probably the time where we should start talking about goals and the evaluation for this year. So I just kinda wanted to have a discussion as a group about how we would initiate this process this year. Is there any guidance from MAS-S on superintendent's evaluation this year?
So, boy, two years ago, and now it's a year and a half ago, Ellen and I went and sat at the MAS-S, I went to the spring, the summer institute for superintendents. They showed us the new instrument that they would use for superintendents. Then Ellen and I went and sat in on it at the MAS-C, MAS-S, a year ago now?
He's looking at it.
In November, the new evaluation instrument. So we, and then Ellen brought it to the board and said, "I'd like to do the new instrument with Liz's evaluation." And Dorothy Presser is ahead of that. We were one of the districts who signed on to that, and we were supposed to receive information, and I think it was coming out in January of last year. February, we were starting to work on the new instrument, and they were still sending us stuff, then March 13th came around, so things were halted. So Tim and I were talking last week about the goals that I had a year ago, would we keep those same goals? And the more and more I looked at them, the other day, things have shifted. You know, crisis mode is what we are always in, in central office. We try to be proactive and pro-solutionary and ahead of every curve that comes into central office. But we've been really in crisis mode, in triage, since probably April of last year. You know, after we got stunned on March 13th, we've probably been in that mode since April. So I think my goals, my goals have stayed the same for the district, to keep us advancing academically, financially, resourcing for professional development and instruction and curriculum. One of our, one of my goals was how to recruit staff and staffing. That's been a very difficult, it would be a hard goal to put in right now, because I think every, any person that's in education or any place has been taken. So it'd be hard for me to say, "How am I going to do this?" It is something that I do look at, and how we recruit here, and we've done a lot of work on that. But that was one of my, that was one of our goals, we talked about, how to get a more diverse group. And then since then, the entire state has moved to talking about a more diverse, more culturally sensitive, and more inclusive state and direction for schools. And I think it's something that the East Bridgewater School District needs to look at. I think that, I just said it tonight with Dr. Williams in the room, and the EBC CC, we had a meeting right before this meeting, and I said that one of my goals would be to put that in, my goals, and award it. And I did, you know, I started coming up with some goals today, the SMART goals, and trying to figure out how I would do this. And this is gonna be, it's a long-range goal, but, you know, we have work to do in this regard, and we're committed to improving it. And that would be a goal that I would have for the district, but I would commit to doing the work and to improving our cultural sensitivity. And it's not only for race, it's for gender. It is for all different walks of life that we have and that we are. I think the equality issue and the equity issue of race is an issue, and we need to talk about it. We need to become more sensitive in some issues that we're probably not so sensitive in, and we need to discuss them. And so that will be a building block for us, for the district. But that's changing from where we were a year ago, of talking about recruiting. I mean, this sort of comes into that, but we were talking about how we would recruit and get a, and get a larger workforce here. We always talk about budget and financial, because I am the fiduciary of the district, and that's always part of it, and what are our long-range goals? The strategic plan is on the table. That got away from us last year. We're in our fifth year, so right now, we just started talking about that, our planning. We'll be starting to plan, and we usually use our vacations for those, or, you know, the Christmas vacation, we usually start those with our principals, because they're around, and we usually take one of those days, because we're all together, or February break or something. And it's easy for us to sit down for longer than an hour for a principal, bringing them even out for 15 minutes is so hard. So I think the strategic plan will show a little bit more of what the needs of the district are, but the goals would be really working with cultural, more inclusive district. I think that that would be one of my major goals. My professional goal would be, as always, is to drive the district academically, due north morally and ethically, to advance the district and its outreach to all, so...
To formalize the process, just, would it make sense to convene the evaluation subcommittee with you over the next few weeks?
Sure.
So that we could actually have formal goals to present at the December meeting?
Yes.
Vote on.
Yep. So I'll have those goals. I'm starting, you know, I looked at them, like when we talked about, and I said that for any other years, it would be, yeah, that's what the superintendent does, but I think over the last year, we've even broadened our horizon in what we do in the office. The day-to-day operations is just, it is not what it used to be. You know, and the management is not what it used to be. So it's a different, it's a different outlook.
Okay. So Trista and Rob, we can put our heads together and pick a date. I can't emphasize enough how much I'd like it to be after Thanksgiving. I just wanna get through Thanksgiving at this point, but maybe the week after that, we can find a time that works to sit down, and we'll have something to bring to the December meeting to vote on. Thank you. Superintendent's corner.
So I see the letter of intent and retire from Sean Kingman, Central School Custodian, effective November 27, 2020. Sean has been in the district longer than any other custodian that we have. I don't think that this isn't something that he came running into my office and said, "I really wanna go, I really wanna go." I think it's just part of your longevity, and you get to that point and say, "Okay, maybe I'll go." But he did tell me that if we need help, that he is willing to come and substitute, be part of the solution, and be around, he's willing to help East Bridgewater in any which way he can. He's a good man. He worked at the Central School. He was a really good worker. I can tell you that. In the summertime, he was always there painting, he was always there moving around. I don't really, I don't, I don't think I've really seen him stop. Gina, he worked for you? And Andrew?
He was at Mitchell School for most of his career, and switched over to Central School maybe two years ago?
With Kate?
This might be his second year there, John, or third year at Central?
Third, I think maybe third year.
How long has he been in the district?
Thirty-seven.
Oh, yeah.
Thirty-seven years.
I was a student. I love saying that. No, he's been here for, yeah, I would say at least 30.
Thirty-seven.
Thirty-five, I'd say.
Is it 35?
Good for him.
He's the longest that was on the docket, but we wanna thank him for all of his hard work, his support. He's very gentle when you spoke to him, very truthful when we spoke to him, did his job, stayed in his lane. That's the most important thing for the custodians to do. They don't, he was that guy, you know, got his work done, didn't overstep, and I think the principals really enjoyed having him as part of their staff. So we wanna thank Sean.
Thank him for his years of service, then. That's great.
So, big news. A couple years ago, we had a Teacher of the Year in mathematics, Mr. Siddiqui, here at the high school. We have just been informed this year that Victoria, Tori Cameron, at the Mitchell School, our STEM teacher, STEAM teacher, is Teacher of the Year for Massachusetts. We are very proud of our program. We're very proud of Mrs. Cameron. Tonight, we have virtual STEAM night. It's online, if you picked up your bag. You said it was tough. Dr. Williams was in there working on her bag a little while ago in the office. I don't know if she got through it, but I did see it in her desk, around her desk. I did see Tori Cameron yesterday or the day before, when I was down there walking around, and she was hustling and bustling, trying to get things together. When we opened that room, Mrs. Cameron was a sixth-grade teacher. I put it in my long-range goals to have technology and to have STEAM for kids. We wanted it at Mitchell School, because we wanted another special, but I wanted kids for hands-on. I wanted somebody who really was excited about this, and that could really teach kids that, we don't all think the same, and that program offers kids who don't all think the same, that can do the same things. She brings, she's articulate, she's young, the kids love her. I think she does a terrific job. Now, I know she does a terrific job down there, but, you know, on behalf of the district, congratulations to Tori, and we look for, you know, better things to come. I feel very badly for her, that I don't know if we'll get to the State House, where they present her with her certificate, and I don't know. I would hope that the commissioner would come out to see her. He may come out by himself to see her, and wonder if we can get into the auditorium or not, but we'll try the best that we can for her, and I hope that the commissioner will call us sooner than later to come down and see her, so...
Very proud of her. I just wanna say, like I said, you know, STEAM night tonight, my 12-year-old, you know, we were online at 5 o'clock, and I was blown away with how well the whole thing was put together, and kudos to her. She does a lot of hard work. And, you know, I think just, for those of you that don't know her, I think she's such an infectious person, just her smile, her energy, her enthusiasm. I have a brand-new STEM teacher at my school this year, and she actually participated on Election Day in the job-alike that we did, and came away after three hours raving with the ideas and the energy and the enthusiasm from Tori into what she wanted to bring into our building, so she's fantastic.
She is, and she's a go-getter, and she goes out and she applies for grants. I want to, you know, on behalf of the district, I'd like to thank Christine Brooks. She's a resident of East Bridgewater. She made a generous donation of 119 handmade children masks and 34 handmade adult masks. I think there's pictures in here, but you'll see, if you go through it, you'll see. I don't think there's pictures in here. So I want to, I just, thanks to Christine Brooks for those.
Thank you.
Appreciate that.
Wonderful. Very kind. Read them herself?
Yes. Grab and Go Meals, these are a couple informational items that are in my corner that you don't see, but it's very important for us to get this out. Now, and I'm going to say a few things about Thanksgiving. On Tuesday, November 24th, the school lunch program will distribute our Grab and Go Meals for multiple days. Families will be able to pick up for multiple meals to cover multiple days. It's pickup on November 24th from 8:15 to 10:15. Meals will cover the 24th and 25th, will resume on the Monday, the 30th. Mrs. Vaughn and I had a conversation. If there are any families who we have not contacted, we have contacted several families, if we did not contact you and you need help to get through the weekend, you need to contact Mrs. Vaughn at dvon@ebps.net, or call the superintendent of schools, and we will have an extra bag for you, and if you need it delivered, just let me know, we'll get it Not every family is going to have Thanksgiving. If we can help in some way or somehow, we will do so. This year is unlike many other years. We have many more people that are going and asking the Salvation Army for help, the food banks for help. Mr. Spagon brought it up about our own food drive at the Central School. They do, Central School does a tremendous job every year. I mean, we have to send over the box truck to pick up the food. There's so much. This is our opportunity to give back to our community. We are a, we are with Project Bread. We serve any student or any person of the ages of zero to 19. So we have been awarded that by the state, we serve that here, and we will continue to do that. So if you didn't hear from us and you're nervous, please call us, and we'll get you, we'll get you some meals for the weekend. In regards to the Thanksgiving break, we are in, obviously, a very tumultuous time with the COVID disease, infection. College students are coming home. We want to go visit grandparents, parents, aunts and uncles outside of the state. I will be writing a letter to my teachers and staff. I implore the community, I implore all of you, I am employing my own central office staff. This is not the year to travel. It is not the year to go outside our bubbles as much as we want to. I will not be traveling to New York. I will not be seeing my family where I grew up, because if I get out here on stage and say, "This isn't the right thing to do, it's not that time," well, then, you know, if I say it, then I got to do it. We need to be careful. We have done a tremendous job in East Bridgewater, in the schools and in the community. We are still green. We are still low in the schools. We have not had any students bring it in or give it to anyone. We have been low infectious. I'm very proud of that. I want to stay there. We saw what happened in Cohasset last weekend. It can happen here and go out and have a party, and that is not a slight to Superintendent Sullivan. I spoke to him on the phone, I called him and wished him the best. We are a very tight collegial group. This can happen to anyone at any time. You go out, you go to somebody's house that you're not really at all the time, it's going to happen. I just implore everybody, we need to stay open for our kids. If you don't think that there are things that go on in homes that are not okay, you're wrong. It happens in East Bridgewater. We've had an uptick. We've had a number of increased in kids in need. We've had a number of increase of domestic violence. We've had an increase in attempts on hurting oneself. We see depression, and we see a lot of social-emotional issues, and it is a breeding ground for adults who can hurt a child physically, mentally, or sexually. I want kids in school because we're here to help and support and to educate. Stay in our bubbles, stay in our lane, stay home. I know it's an awful thing to say, I know it's a terrible time to say it. It's Thanksgiving, it's a wonderful time of year, and we're going to start the holiday season. But let's think about this. We're talking about staying in school, keeping schools open, and keeping kids safe. So I wanted to get that out on the Grab and Go Meals. And then the last thing I have for you, is I have a packet, and as you saw, I had to put my own packet together because John was busy today, and Gina was busy, and Barbara was busy, and everybody else was busy. So if everybody thinks I don't do my own packets, I do. But these guys were very busy today.
A big moment today.
I got my own packet together.
Is that your stapler?
Yes. I even had to take my own staple off my desk, and it doesn't even have staples in it. So I grabbed paper clips. John, would you pass these? One, two. I think we all got one.
I need one more.
We need one more? Okay. Can you share with, so I can, I'll give you mine in two seconds. I got one that's written on that you don't want. So I think there's a misconception of some things that I say, and I'd like to just start by discussing this with the board, the committee. We meet once a month, and I don't think people realize, we cannot have conversations together, all of us together, whether it's a Zoom, a GoToMeeting, Google Classroom, we can't do that. People need to understand, I have one opportunity or two opportunities a month to get information into your hands and say, "This is the direction I'm leading the district in, I need your support." So there are conversations and meetings that John Shea may have with a group of people, that Dr. Williams has with a group of people, and then people say, "Oh, my God, you know, John's going to spend $60,000 on SMARTboards or the new Touch Views, and Dr. Williams is going to spend $40,000 on health books." And they just hear little pieces, because we have these committee meetings, until we can bring it to you and say, "It's actually, we're going to spend $600,000 on the Touch Views, and we're going to spend actually $60,000 on health curriculum." And until we have those conversations, people take pieces of information, and they go out, and it gets spread out, and it's inaccurate. So over the last few weeks, I have to come to you and say to you, "I want to get kids back. I want to bring them back." Yes, I want them all here full-time, but right now, we have an MOA with our association. We have good conversation with our association right now. We have a great Health and Safety Committees that we started meeting with last week, and we're going to continue to meet with them every two weeks. We also have an MOA that says we're going to keep kids at six feet right now. I asked you for your support to bring students back into classrooms that only had three students, and we'll start filling them up at six feet. We're doing that. Over the last two weeks, we brought over about 165 students back that were at risk or that we knew that they needed our help, or that had an IEP that we knew that that student needed our support. We've been bringing back students at a clip a day. I spoke to the high school principal, they got seven more on Monday coming in. We're working steadfast. We are having meetings to make sure that we are choosing the students that need the support as quickly as we can and bringing them in. At the Mitchell School, I saw Mr. Gentile, we spoke yesterday in his office, they are bringing them back as quickly and efficiently as they can. They've had to move some students, you know, some students might have been on a cohort with a teacher who they really loved, but they wanted their other son or daughter in that. That same day, we couldn't accommodate. Mr. Gentile said, "Listen, if you could move to Cohort B, we'll move you both to Cohort B, and we can get you in." It's not the greatest thing that we can do, but what it does do is get you in here four days a week. And that was, that's the end-all result that we want. So a few weeks ago, Dr. Williams and I have these conversations on a daily basis, and we started talking about bringing kids back in on Wednesday, on the remote day. And then we thought, you know, our teachers are at home because we have an MOA that we agreed that on remote days that we would allow our teachers to stay home. And then, so Dr. Williams and I had a brief meeting with Kurt Shippey, the Association President, and just said, "Hey, look, we're thinking about Wednesdays opening it back up. We'd like to bring back students." And then we thought about it and said, "Maybe we need to bring back teachers first, give them a couple of days to think about it, to get comfortable back in that five-day situation, make sure that, you know, they can do everything that they need to do here." And that conversation has continued with the association. Then Dr. Williams and I met with the principals, and we asked the principals to send out a concern sheet, an issue sheet, comment sheet. And what we heard is, and we are hearing, we're hearing concerns that some students may lose time, that it's the day that they really get to see everybody in one classroom, that we've worked so long and hard on getting a routine and rituals at the elementary level. I feel some of the teachers, some of the comments were, "We're going to lose rituals and routines, and every time we get into a ritual or routine, you seem to switch that up on us, Superintendent." That's one side. And then the other side is I have children who need to be in school, and I have parents who need to get back to work and who need their children in school. And we've heard from many parents that they say to me, "She or he does not listen to me like he or she listen to their teacher." And they are regressing with their language, phonics, even handwriting. We have seen a few parents contact us about. We did have some MAP data from the assessment. We have seen some regression from kids being home. This is a thumbnail sketch. This is not, this isn't the end-all, be-all. What I am saying to you this evening, what I'm asking for the chair to ask is that, would you allow me to sit in a meeting and to start negotiating, to start conversations with the EBA Association for the MOA to start on Wednesdays, bringing teachers back fully so that we, as administrators and building principals, can meet with those teachers on those Wednesdays in the afternoon face-to-face? Yes, I agree. The Google Meet is great. I agree that we're doing a lot with technology. It works very well. There's nothing better than in-person. There's nothing better than sitting here at this table right now, seeing all of your faces and having this conversation, because we can see each other's body language, we know that we're passionate about this, we know that we're upset about this, we know that we're happy about something. And that's really what I'm trying to get out here tonight, is I just need your support to get me into those meetings, to have a meeting with his executive board or his negotiating team, along with Tim, Dr. Williams, so we can sit and have the conversation. Our teachers are home on Wednesdays. We agreed on that in August. If we want to bring kids back, and we're talking about a tiered approach, then let's do a tiered approach. Let's bring our teachers back, let them get comfortable, let them get back to that routine and ritual, the five days, being here with us. And I'm not just pulling this out of my hat, that I am concerned about the social and emotional well-being of my teachers as well. And we talk about kids being at home. Our teachers are at home. I can't imagine teaching a class with three young children running around, being able to focus. So what they have done is they have, you know, lifted a mountain up over their head and done great work. However, we need to be conscious of their health and mental well-being. And not to say that the schools and the brick and mortar here are better than being at home in your own home where you can relax, but I do feel that we have personnel here also that can support our teachers. We have each other. It's nice to have another adult sit across from you like this and talk about, wow, you know, I'm talking about civics, we just went through this election. What did your kids say in ninth grade? Because this is what my kids are saying in 10th. Have rate of reliability. Hey, could you look over these exams that I gave out? Give me some of your exams. That's rate of reliability. That's hard to do on a Google Meet. Dr. Williams talks about this a lot with the facilitators, with the principals, and we need to rate each other, we need to do peer observations, we need to have those connections and conversations. If we don't, we again go back to the 1970s, being in a silo. We don't want to do that. I'm just asking for your support. I'm not looking for a date. Those are my thumb-scale dates, because we're going into Thanksgiving Day next week. There's no way I can bring them in next week. I don't even have, I don't even have that conversation until Thursday of this week. I thought maybe return teachers December 2nd, if we can get some type of agreement. Then bring teachers again by themselves, only teachers, on December 9th. And then we're looking at, if we were to keep the half-days or go to the full day, we would look at Cohort A on December 16th, and then Cohort B on the 23rd, and then on January 26th Cohort A, and then on January 13th Cohort B. And it just brings the kids back, it gives them another day. So if I'm Cohort A on Monday, I'm Cohort A on Tuesday, it's my week, I'm Cohort Day on Wednesday. There's a lot that can get done, even though it's a half-day. It's going to be a nightmare for John and Joanne Benner for transportation. He's willing to do it. He's supporting the model. It's going to be a nightmare for Dr. Williams and the principals and some of the assessments that we do on those half-days, and how do we get them in, and how do we get them out? The lunches, how are we going to get lunches on that half-day? Have we been grab and go? What are we doing? Mrs. Vaughn's ready to do this. This isn't, this isn't a snap the finger and say, you know, Liz didn't just come down and say, "Okay, we're doing this next Wednesday, let's go." I know that's what it looks like, because I only meet with you once. It is constant, constant, constant in my office and with the principals. So to get into this conversation, I need you. I need your support. We already have told you and talked with you on October 21st, we went through our full plan. We told you that on January 23rd, we hope, or the 25th, that Monday after Martin Luther King, we hope to have everybody coming back, and hope to have the full buses moving, and we hope to be in good standing. I'm hoping that there's a vaccine on January 4th that I'm standing in line that they give I haven't changed this plan. I haven't changed my thought process of bringing kids back. We're still in the hybrid, we're still at six feet. We need to start someplace, and if I don't start the conversation, we're just prolonging of doing what's right. I know the teachers are going to say, "She's not listening, she didn't hear me, I told her it's concerning me, I need a break, this isn't good for kids, the instruction is mismatched." Well, I'm going to show the teachers this evening. I heard you from Central School, I heard you from Mitchell School, and I've heard you from the junior-senior high school. I'm going to show the school committee. I asked that you keep this private, I asked that it stays with you, it's just to show you, we're listening. We're listening. You know, I have a boss, too, and I said that, I have you, and I have the Commissioner of Education, and we all have the governor. Whether he's right or wrong, schools are not the super-spreader. We're not seeing it. But I certainly don't want to put anybody in a health risk. So we stay at six feet, but we come back with teachers, we come back with teachers, and then we allow the kids to come back. So I ask for that support on that. I don't know if you want to stop there, and then I'll go to the second one?
Yeah, so why don't we stop there for right now? So I think-
So I think, looking at, you know, and again, I know they're thumbnail dates, but just looking at the way you laid it out, obviously there's conversations with the EBA and your hope is to start with half-days. So would it be appropriate for us to, you know, vote to support with the idea that when we come back in December, we talk about where we're at at that point, what dates we have in mind, and then the conversation about the full day comes from that?
Yes.
You know, so I'd like to make a motion and then we can have discussion after the fact, but...
Tim, both attorneys have been, they had a conversation today, they have said that 4:30 on Thursday is fine, but both attorneys have talked to, Kurt Shippey spoke to the EBA, the MTA's representative, I did speak to Nick Domenello. We both have our plans of how the discussion will begin.
Okay. So I'd like to make a motion to encourage and support the Superintendent in opening negotiations with the EBA regarding our MOA and, at a time that the Superintendent deems appropriate, to change our model such that Wednesday half-days will be reopened to our staff and to our students.
For a full day? That would be down the...
Right. We'll talk about full day at the next meeting where we're at.
These are just for Wednesdays?
Wednesdays. Wednesdays only we're talking about.
Wednesdays only, at six feet.
At six feet.
I'll second.
Well, we're by a second by Mrs. Pennington. Any discussion?
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Okay.
So second thing, we have had a discussion and we, we've asked our building administration not to discuss this at all until I came out to get some permission to move this forward. There is still a lot of work to do on this because of the way the schedule runs. I did talk to Mr. Shippey about it and this will be something that will be in discussion. I want to support and bring back the seniors and give them a senior year. The requirements for state colleges and the Massachusetts diploma from the District of East Bridgewater, all of those requirements still have to be met. The Commissioner has not moved on anything this year. Last year they moved on the MCAS, we could waive. He has not done that this year, this is a full year and we're going to stay in as the Commissioner has told us. I do have a meeting on Thursday, the Superintendent Association will be meeting with the Commissioner. So if anything changes at that time, I'll let everybody know. We are looking at if we could bring seniors back sooner than later, if we could fit them in the rooms at six feet, what rooms would they be in? We have athletes, we could probably, we're talking about waiving an athlete in gym, talking about if a student is a, that plays in the jazz band and goes to their lessons and those types of things, that maybe they don't take the music class because they don't need it. We would look at a child, we would look at a student scheduled who is a senior, who has the requirements met, that may have taken some courses that they wanted to take along the way, but we would talk to that student to limit their time on campus, but to allow them to be here on campus as a group. All we heard last year was we've robbed the seniors of their senior year. There's bookends. The kindergarten, they are all in on the same day, in the AM and the PM. I wish I could have pushed it and had kindergarten in all day in one classroom, I certainly would have tried if we could have gotten that through in August. On the bookend of the seniors, this is it. These are their friends, this is their time, getting their yearbooks, that last yearbook and walking around having their friends sign it is an important day. If we can get them a prom this time around, that would be a really neat thing to do. And it's not going to be in February and there probably won't be a winter dinner dance or a winter ball, but there could be something in May or early June. And we certainly would want them to be out on the field in June for a regular commencement ceremony. I am, I have directed Mr. Clements and Mr. Sylvia, but Bill right now is, because he oversees guidance, he is discussing his thoughts so that we could talk to the guidance. We have not talked to any teachers or facilitators or department heads. We tried to keep it off of Mr. Sylvia's back right now because if we had mentioned this any further, everybody would have been all over him and said, "Yes, yes, 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 do it, do it, do it, we'll do anything you want, sir, get us back." We want the kids back. I think it's important for us to look at this and see if we can. I did ask my cohort today of the Lighthouse Superintendents if anybody else had thought about that. Everybody's thumbs went up. If they could, we would, and we're looking at it. We get it that six feet right now is where we need to stay, washing our hands, social distancing, wearing our masks will do. It's important for us to have this conversation. And I think it's important for our parents to know that we are listening and to get these kids back because they're going to go to college next year. This is it. Or they're going to go to the workforce, or they're going to go in the armed forces, or they're going to be a statement, you know, do whatever they want to do. And so that would be the next, is if we can bring them in at six feet, I'd like to start thinking about, and if it means holding off on seven through 11 for a little bit longer and getting the seniors in first, then that's what we do. That plan will come after, the principals need to look at it. Karen Clifford has, as Director of Guidance, she did tell us she'll look at it. They know there's some requirements that we cannot waive, but there are other requirements that we can and there's some classes that we might not have to take, or like Dr. Williams said, maybe some classes you can still take online and just take them online. But to allow seniors to come in and have a senior lunch, have 165 kids, where we know that we can space them out, I think it's important. So that's on the table.
So I would make a motion to authorize the Superintendent at a time and date that she deems acceptable to change the high school model to allow seniors to come back to school full-time at six-foot spacing at all times.
Yep. And until that model's moved to, we discussed four and a half, or to three, or to two, or to one?
Right. Moved by Mrs. Higgins?
Second.
Second by Ms. Coligan. Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
What I would ask, obviously now that we vote on this, it'll be on social media in 10 minutes.
Yep.
The seniors are coming back. So I would ask if you could, in the next few days, put out something to the community about what your estimated timeframe is on this? Are we talking, and again, you don't have to comment on it now, but are you talking like after Thanksgiving, are you talking after Christmas? Like what's your thought process on that?
Yeah. I have a letter for staff and faculty that'll be going out probably Thursday or Friday and then my holiday letter will be going out to parents probably on Monday.
Yep.
That will give me a little bit of time with the principals. I know that Jeff and I spoke about, Mr. Sylvia and I spoke about this weeks ago, they started looking at classes. I spoke to Bill the other day, private, Mr. Clements privately. He, he's been in two different districts.
Yep.
They ran two different types of schedules. So we talked a little bit about him just starting to think, he had some good ideas of, you know, because he's seen a couple of different, and Franklin, a little bit bigger. So we had a good conversation about that. So what does, what does the student absolutely need to graduate? What could we ask the student to give up because they don't need? And these are things that need to be talked about. And so I want to give the principals a little bit of chance to get out ahead of it and explore, especially the guidance councils, because this isn't easy. It's not easy. And, you know, your English classes are always heavy senior year and the math classes are usually pretty heavy, depending on which math you're in, and science, because you need the three years of science. And a lot of kids like to take the law classes on their senior year. So those are things we want to, you know, we don't want to, we're not taking anything away from kids, we're not, if a, if a classroom goes down from 19 kids to 11 because we just say to, you know, "Listen, you don't need that class, you need these two other ones, but then we want you to go home or want you to have lunch and then head out," we're not going to get rid of that class, we're not going to get rid of that teacher. What we are doing is limiting the time that they spend up here.
And those, of course, I mean, it goes without saying, but any parent, you know, who still wants their child home, whether it's a hybrid or, or full remote, they're still going to have that option, so pay it.
Oh, yeah. Absolutely have the option.
Parents can hear that, so there's no panic.
Yep.
"Oh, my goodness, the senior class, you know, is at some point going back, now my child has to go back."
Well, I even, I even said that I would meet personally with the senior class and let them know, "Listen, this isn't a game. You want to come to school, you want to be part of the solution, you got to do the right things. And that means staying in your bubble on the weekends." You know, the MIAA is going to vote on Friday. The medical, the medical task force, the task force have sent their information and what they would like to do with the sports season to the medical. The medical has now sent it to the board. Jeff Granatino, who's the Superintendent Marshfield, is President and Chair of that board, he said today, "It's a very difficult decision that'll be made on Friday afternoon." I can tell you right now, UConn has already pulled out and there are other leagues that have pulled out. It's very, it's very hard for us to keep it, we talk about equity, it's hard to say that we're going to keep sports when we can't have drama and music and the other things that go on at a high school. And we need to think about that. And I didn't play an instrument, I was an athlete, but I'm the Superintendent of Schools, so everybody's important and everything is important. And we need to think about that and be part of the solution with our counterparts across the state.
One last point of clarification. So was it your intention with the seniors that they would be five-day a week or for now four-day a week or four and a half day, or what was your thought on that?
If...
Or you just don't want to work that out?
If Wednesdays, if you get them in, it'd be five days a week. If that, then we'll go with the four days.
Okay.
But they would, and that was something that, you know, Bill and I spoke about, you know, that they have that rotating schedule. But they do have, seniors usually do have that cohort of eight, nine teachers that are just that cohort of seniors. Is there a way to shift? Is there a way to just make those nine, 10 teachers directed towards those seniors? And how would we do that? Would I have to support? I do know from another school district that spoke today, they brought in two other teachers. So they could get in on K through five, that's K through five, but, and they got it done. They're all in, in this district at K through five. So they brought it in with two other teachers, they had the room, they did it. Anything's possible if we have an open mind.
Thank you for your hard work on this. And I also want to mention, thank you for listening to us from last month. I mean, you know, I think a lot of us voiced a lot of concern about bringing the kids closer and so I appreciate you taking that under consideration with these plans as we go forward.
This is the updated list on the COVID, just so you have that today. These are the brand-new numbers, not off the press. I ask that you do not share this place, this does have the individual schools on site. We do not put that out, we put out for the district on our website because we could, people could trace it, if you, I mean, if you wanted to really sit down and do that.
Thank you. Anything else?
I'm done. It's up to Gina and, or Dr. Williams and Mr. Shea.
Mr. Shea, want to go first? Gina, do you want to go first?
Mine's quick, I promise.
Yeah, you better go because...
No, so I just wanted to share, I mean, certainly we're working on plans for more movement with in-person, but we're also mindful that we need to continue to examine our hybrid and our remote models. So we're working right now on a survey for all of our stakeholders, a student survey, which we have not surveyed the students yet since the beginning of the year, a parent survey and a staff survey. We obviously have already surveyed staff and parents about their thoughts on coming back, so this survey is more about the actual models that their students are working within right now and how we can adjust or improve those to better meet the needs of the students and the families. So it's going to tie in some social, emotional wellbeing as well as academics. And a lot of the questions will be very similar so that we can triangulate the data to see our teachers, parents and students all seeing things from the same perspective. And do we see some outliers, like an area that is of huge concern to all of the stakeholders and that's where we focus our efforts and attention. So I know when speaking to the building principals, this, the timing right now is good because the end of a term, parent conferences, kind of an opportunity for people to reflect on how term one has gone. We are coming up on a holiday next week and how mindful people will be about getting their survey done. So what we'll do is we're going to plan to have the survey ready to go out by the beginning of next week, but we'll remind people right after Thanksgiving that they'll still have time to complete it, but we'll have it all analyzed and ready to share the data with you at the December 15th meeting.
Thank you.
I know the building principals, once we have a draft, want to share it with staff first before we send it out.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Any questions?
You're welcome.
John, you're up. All right. It's been a while since we talked about the budget and the financials. In the packet, I have the comparison of the operating budget at November 13th, 2012 compared to last year at this time. This is the way that I've been presenting so you can compare how we are doing last year. Last year we met our budget, so it's a good comparison. Our non-salary budget, we have an appropriation of 3.3 million. We've expended or spent 681,000. We've encumbered 1.9 million and we have an available balance on November 13th of Now, last year at this time, we had an available balance of 293,000, so that's great news. We have been spending judiciously. I think we're doing a better job with the, with the, with the schools on where we spend the money on and who we spend the money on. We've seen some significant savings in a lot of our supplies by switching vendors, but that is a big difference. That's a $431,000 difference. So I reviewed all the spending. One thing we didn't do this year that we've done in previous years is we do a 20% encumbrance. So what we do, it's kind of like a holding of 20% for the schools. We didn't do that this year. Had I done that this year, that would have reduced the available balance by 160,000. Supplies, due to the fact that 170 days, we're in school, hybrid, less kids in school, we've seen a decrease in spending of supplies by 66,000. Special ed tuitions, they went from 180 days to 170 days. So we start 10-day or 5% decrease in special ed tuitions, that's about 65,000. I see you trying to add it up to, I'll add it up at the end. Decrease in the number of students that are tuitioned out for special ed, we've seen, we've seen a decrease. We've brought kids back, which is great to bring an East Bridgewater kid back to an East Bridgewater school. We've had some kids move, so we've seen a decrease there of about 275,000. Now, the opposite, the opposite is tuition, transportation, special ed transportation is going through the roof. The vans, it used to be able to hold four to five kids, now they're down to two kids, sometimes one kid. So our transportation is over budget right now, about 160,000. Those are the big, big variances between last year and this year. If you take the 160,000 in the encumbrance that I didn't do, you take the 66,000 in the supply reduction, 65,000 in decrease in tuitions for special ed because it went 10 less days, 275,000 for the decrease in tuitions and the increase of 160,000 in transportation, that all in aggregate sums up to 406,000. So that, I tried to give you the high level, I mean, we can go line by line, but that's a high level of why there's a difference from last year to this year. As far as non-salary budget goes, I think we're in, we're in great shape. We've been using as much of the CARES Act money, which is not included in any of this as we can. We have spent or estimated to spend about 1.5 million in CARES Act money. We have spent or estimated to spend about 1.5 million in CARES Act money. So that, that really has, has helped with all the PPE, additional laptops for teachers, instructional assistance. That's been a great help and working with the town has been great on the CARES Act. They've been very supportive. Salary, I've been working on the, the salary projections. I've been working on the salary budget. I have a first cut of next year's salary budget, so we should be getting the budget subcommittee together to meet because we should be getting that letter from the town administrator any day now about what we should be looking for in next year's budget. But I have projected out the salary through the end of the year. And again, like the non-salary budget, salary budget is looking great. I think we're in great shape. I don't think we're going to have any, any problems meeting the budget this year again.
Okay.
Any questions on that?
So Ellen, maybe we can discuss a date to, after the hall, after Thanksgiving again to convene the budget subcommittee. We'll talk to Teresa. Maybe we can do it the same day as the evaluation subcommittee so I don't end up working full time for the district. Thank you, John.
Sure.
Just a, a quick note that John and I have been talking about this, that on December 31st, the CARES Act money is over.
Mm-hmm.
All right? So we did purchase Soul Source, which was a cleaning company. We're going to make a decision on when to clean the buildings, whether that comes after the Thanksgiving Day break in between December or does it after December? Or is it before we bring the kids back in, in January? And, you know, that's another thing that we'll bring up on Thursday with the EBA, that if they want to do this, you know, for the Wednesday, you know, you want to see this before you come in, that's something that we did. But that was a $30,000 purchase for us because we want to show, you know, a full cleaning, which goes in our VAC systems, it goes through everything. But John and I did speak about this. On December 31st, the CARES Act money is over. And we have, and that's something that John does have some ideas going forward, we have these monitors that we brought in that were COVID monitors, that were wiping down door handles, that are wiping down windows, that are, they have been, I can't say enough about these monitors we have. If you walk around our buildings and if you ever want to take a walk around the building, please call me and I'll take you for a walk. I was in every building. Gina was, Dr. Williams was in there today, I think walked most, all three buildings. I walked all three buildings on Monday. No matter where I went, I saw somebody wiping something down, every place, central school, middle school, and the high school. They're doing a terrific job. But that money that we allocated for those extra hands, that money will stop on December 31st. And John has allocated as much as he can and he's put it all there and moved things around so that we could use that money. We need to make a decision going forward, and I think John has his plan and we'll discuss it and we'll come back to you. If we're not ready to give these monitors up and we're not ready to, you know, not have these people support us in the journey to get through this year, we need to make a decision how we're going to fund them and how we're going to keep them and move us forward. That's something I know that weighs on his shoulders daily. He's, he really does do a terrific job for us. I know it's weighing on him and he, I know that he wants that decision, he needs that decision earlier than later.
Sure.
Right. Well, then that's part of this budget subcommittee. But, I mean, the good news is we do have a, the ESAR grant of 156,000 for anything from January forward. So that should cover most of, most of the monitors and custodians.
Okay.
That we bring in extra, but.
So by the time we meet next month, we should have a firm idea of what we're asking and where it's going to come from and.
Yep.
Okay.
Thank you.
Anything else?
I have the revolving account.
Do it.
I have to apologize. In the fiscal year 20, at 6:30, 20 column, which is the one, two, three, four, fifth column over, there's a blank and sped tuitioned in revolving. There should be a number there of 43,149.
We'll let that slide this time.
Thank you. School lunch, I'll, I'll get into a little more detail on, on these because of the financial impact that some of these areas are having. School lunch is at 128,000. Last year had a balance of 238,000, 237,000 at this time. Obviously, you know, last year, we continued to pay. So we do expect to see a drop in, in the school lunch account. I, I met with Deb Vaughn this week, reviewed financials, projected out for the rest of the year, and it looks like this year, we're going to be doing a little better than breakeven, which is great news. Circuit breaker, the balance is less than last year, but that, our circuit breaker payments have been decreasing annually. And that's not necessarily a bad sign because it's based upon the amount of special ed tuitions we have in the year prior. Our special ed tuitions are decreasing. Our circuit breaker revenue is, is also decreasing, which is a good sign because the circuit breaker only pays you 70%. So if it decreases a dollar in tuition, only 70 cents is decreased in circuit breaker. So overall, it's a good sign. Hopefully, I explained it good enough. School, school choice, we have a balance of 730, almost 740,000. That's a little overstated. There are, as you remember during the budget process, we had new positions of $292,000 worth of new positions, which we approved of paying for out of revolving funds. Those positions right now have not been coded or allocated to the school choice. So I'll be doing the entries to have that occur. But the good news is, I believe, at the end of fiscal year 20, we will have, fiscal year 21, we will have a balance in that account of 620,000. Last year was 650,000, so.
So this doesn't include any of the projected, the quarterly school choice payments we're going to get?
It does not.
This is just as of right now?
This is as of right now. But if I project it out for the year?
Yep.
What expenses I'll be allocating there and the payments that are coming in, I'm, I'm projecting that we will have pretty much the same balance at the end of the year that we had at the beginning.
Right.
Athletic, you had asked me to do an analysis on athletics. I haven't done that yet. I was going to wait for the, at least the first season to end. So I will be coming back to you with some information on that. Preschool, you can see a negative balance in preschool. That's because it's, it's. We're going to have a negative balance. We can have a negative balance, but we, we are going to have a loss in preschool that we will need to make up a little bit for. I'll be discussing that with the budget subcommittee and how to do that. It's, it's based upon the schedule. It's based upon the social distancing requirements. It's based upon the drop in revenue, the number of kids that are coming. If you take the number of kids that we have in our preschool and it was a normal year, we would need four less staff members.
Okay.
So what, what I'm planning on doing is taking those four staff members and allocating them to the CARES Act, having the CARES Act reimburse for that. It's not reflected in these numbers, but I think it only makes sense that it's, it's due to COVID. So I will be transferring that salary expense, which will, which will help.
So you're allowed to get reimbursement for a position that you would have otherwise cut because of COVID? So like if you had a position, but because of COVID, you're saying we're going to have to cut this?
We are certainly going to try.
Okay. I, I.
I don't see any reason why it.
That's great. No, that's fine. Yeah.
Like, really? You're going to do this to me right now? We hired them for this position.
That's great.
Before and after school care, I will be sitting with Lisa Verasso and reviewing financials on that. It still has a pretty good balance in that account. But I cannot give you a projection at this time for the rest of the year. But I will next meeting.
Are our preschool numbers, are we at capacity right now given our restrictions?
Okay.
Which is, as John said, much lower than.
Right. But there is no extra room. If a parent wanted to enroll their child, we do not have slots right now.
Okay.
Can I ask a question?
Sure.
If we got to the school building rental?
Yeah.
Are we still renting the building?
No.
No. Thanks. Gina, you, on the preschool too, we, we bought a lot of, a lot of seating, like different types of desks, seating array.
Yes. So instead of the tables where you would only be able to fit a couple of students, they've removed a lot of the tables and have rocking desks and things for the students on the floor. So Mr. McGlaughlin, you had mentioned about the capacity. We still have to be available for students who age in and qualify, so that would still be possible.
Thank you.
Any questions? Looks good, John.
Well done. I mean, I've said this every time I go over this, I continue to be impressed with how healthy this, this all is and, you know, it gives us flexibility to make decisions. I know a lot of districts are so lucky, so.
Some areas are decreasing, but that's the reason why we had the money in it to begin with for rainy days and school years like this.
COVID.
It makes, I think it makes allies a lot, a lot easier.
There are other districts I know firsthand that are making very hard decisions right now because they do not have the flexibility that this sheet has for their kids, so. Well done. Questions?
And you don't let me spend any money.
Anything else, John?
All right, thank you.
Good job.
Well done.
Kira.
Good update. Yes, so, so all the senior nights for all of the sports, I believe, have been finished at this time and they all went pretty, pretty well. I know that for most athletes, this wasn't the year that they wanted to have or deserved, but I do think that senior nights went pretty well. Last week, we had our TRIAM induction. We were lucky to have it in the auditorium and it went really, really, really well. I remember, I'm in TRIAM, and I remember sitting there and remembering how similar it was to last year's despite COVID. And it was really great to hear live music again. Also, the Student Senate is running their pie fundraiser, so if you know any kid in Student Senate, I highly recommend finding them because the pies are really, really good. We're also running a canned food drive and the Key Club is decorating the common for Christmas. That's it.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you. We used to have a kid come by our office with the pies. No one's come by now.
I'll send the Haggins.
Yeah, it sounds like an opportunity.
Whoa, whoa, whoa. Wait a minute. I just asked about the pies and you guys told me to go online. A kid used to come by.
Right.
Your kid didn't even, your kid was there and he didn't say.
I'm sure you'll have someone asking you if you want to buy a pie.
Oh, good. Thank you.
They're for Christmas, though.
Yeah. Usually, we would be doing them for Thanksgiving, but because of COVID, it had to get pushed back.
Well, I know what topic conversation is going to be when I get home tonight. Pies, how many we're getting, and what kind. I can't wait. Anything else?
Uh, no, that's it.
All right. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thanks, Kira.
Public comment. We have one person signed up, Alorian Orafino.
Welcome.
Glass is in the mask. I'm not sure how this is going to work without fogging, but I'm going to try.
There's no one else near you. If you need to pull it down so you can be heard, that's fine.
We'll, we'll try it. We'll see how, how fast it takes with the glasses to fog up. First of all, people are frustrated. Everyone's frustrated regardless of where you stand on where we are with the COVID of being in school hybrid or remote or full end. Everyone is frustrated. And I just have to say, I was really, really, really disappointed at the meeting last week. From parents, from all, from everyone up here. Take off the mask.
Sorry. I can't make out everything you're saying. Thank you.
I'll try it again. I was disappointed in the meeting last week. I was disappointed in the tone of the meeting.
Last month, you mean?
I was a little bit embarrassed, to be honest with you. Can you hear me?
Yeah. Do you mean last month or last?
The last, yes, the last school committee meeting. Sorry. It's all blending in. Parents, from everyone up here, it was, I was disappointed. And like I said, I know everyone is frustrated. We all have our own feelings about how all this is going, but everybody just really needs to try to be nicer to each other. I'm not right, you're not right, you're not right. No one is right. There is no right answer. Everybody, please, on social media, everywhere, just try to be a little kinder to each other. The first thing that I need to say is to Ms. Kira. Last week, you were trying to give your, as you usually do, your synopsis and to tell everyone what's going on. I was at home, I was not here. And you are owed an apology. I heard everything that you said, but there were people that were talking over you, that were yelling and screaming and stomping around while you were trying to speak. And what you have to say is important, so you remember that. And please, everyone up here, you should have stopped and said that this young woman is trying to speak. I don't know why none of you did that because what she has to say is important. She's the one that's in the classroom. She's in the fire. She's the one that's here. You guys aren't sitting in a classroom all day long. Kira is. So give her the respect that she deserves, everybody. I didn't mean to go on for that long. Couple of other things. There are three things that, we're in hybrid and we're in hybrid now. We don't know if we're going to be in hybrid for another month. It may be two months, it may be three months. We have no idea. Has there been any, there's been very little discussion as far as I know of how to improve the hybrid model. As far as I know, as far as I can see, there are three things that need to happen. The first thing needs to be technology. Second thing needs to be teachers. The third thing needs to be parents and families. Technology, I know, is not the greatest. I know the teachers have laptops that are not adequate, that cannot run multiple programs at a time, having hard times with cameras, et cetera, et cetera. This is not, it's, it's, technology is the foundation of how, how this is going to be successful. I don't understand what's going on with, with the teachers' laptops. We're only making their job harder. And if we can't fix that, then how is this ever going to be successful? At home, we've gone through six Chromebooks in my own house because the Chromebooks won't load. It's not minor things, like it's not a new, it's not because it's, it's not a new Chromebook. I have three kids in the high school. It's because they're not loading, because they can't have the camera on and have the programs that they need to run for school. We're having a virtual classroom and my son can't put the camera on because then he can't see what he has to do. So not only is my son in a classroom where he, in a virtual classroom, he can't see anyone, but his teacher can't see him. These are little minor things that I don't know why they haven't been addressed, but it, the technology piece has to get better. We have to find a way to make this work. Have to. I'm going to just flip to my notes for the teachers because my second point, and I will wrap this up. I know I don't, we don't all want to listen to me talk forever. I had 17 parent-teacher conferences, because I have three kids at the junior, senior high school. Talked to a lot of them. And their number one issue was technology. If we do not have our teachers happy, productive, and supported, there really isn't any point of doing any of this. They are not replaceable. There were people at this meeting last week that said, well, if they don't want to work, then hire new ones. Let's be realistic, people. We can't even hire substitutes. Seriously. Our teachers are working harder than anybody up here on this stage and I really, really, really think that they need the support of everyone here, every parent, every principal. They are the foundation. If we lose our teachers, we have nothing. What are our kids going to be doing? Sitting in the auditorium in the cafeteria, watching movies? How is that productive? Again, none of this matters and they're not replaceable. And then the last thing that I wanted to say was just for students and families. I mean, our families need to be heard and they need to be supported as well, not just those that agree with the agenda, really. Parents need to encourage their kids to, again, turn on the cameras, send positive emails, emails, not just angry emails. Our kids are learning. They're just not learning the way that we want them to, and our teachers will work with you. Just ask them. They want your feedback. Liz, you've been pleading with the community to stay in their bubble. I'm going to plead with everyone right back with you. Please do this, but I know that people in this community are not following the guidelines. Just get on social media. You can see birthday parties with 10, 15 people, nobody wearing masks. You can see them sitting on the school parking lot, ripping the masks off, standing six feet apart, not even six feet apart, 10, 15 people. They're not doing it, and I don't want to send my kids back to school full-time knowing that there are people out there that can infect them. They'll be fine, I'll be fine, but my neighbor won't be, my parents won't be. So they're not doing it. Some people are, but it doesn't take a lot for this to continue to spread. And I think that was about it, so I'm done talking. Liz, I do have a question for you, though. I know that I had sent you an email regarding a parent-teacher forum to literally have a proactive, positive conversation about what we as parents can do to help them and what the teachers can do to help us and how we can make this work. And you said that it was being worked on, so I wanted to get an update.
And I forgot to bring that up. Mrs. Kitchenham, former, the former chair, called me on the same thing, and I said, "Okay, let me talk to the high school principal. We have a principals' meeting on Thursday. We'll set some meetings up at then, then we're going to put it out." I did talk to the principals. Dr. Williams had talked to the principals about setting it up, and they thought that they were getting a lot of emails and talking to parents at one point, but I think now we're past that point, and I think that we've discussed this and that, you know, Mrs. Kitchenham called me, you had emailed me, and we were in the midst of doing it. We meet with them on Thursday this week, probably set up a few dates so that we can get the input and what you're hearing, what you're seeing, and what you can help with.
And again, it's, we're capable of having productive, positive conversations of how we can make this model, any model, work, but we have to have an open conversation about it.
Absolutely.
And the teachers need to be involved instead of the parents, so, sorry for taking so long. I apparently had a lot to get off my chest.
Thank you. We appreciate it.
Thank you.
And I just want to say before we move on, I don't typically, you know, encourage a response to public comment during the meeting, but I agree with what you said regarding that I think you are owed an apology, Kara, and, you know, I was reflecting on last month's meeting afterwards, and I think I absolutely should have stopped the meeting to allow you the chance to be heard and for people to leave if they were going to be disrespectful, and I feel badly about it, and I think I was so caught up in the moment, stunned by it, that I didn't take the right action. So you have my apologies, and I'll be better with that next time. Hopefully, there won't be one, but if there is, I'll be better with that.
Thank you.
Yep. All right, thank you. So moving on to action items. I would take a motion to approve the school committee meeting minutes from the October 20th, 2020 meeting. Move by Ellen?
Second.
Second by Amanda. All in favor?
Aye.
Take a motion to approve accounts payable, I'm sorry, my mouth's not working, accounts payable warrant, 19 SV dated 11/4/2020.
I'll move.
Move by Ellen?
Second.
Second by Amanda. All in favor?
Aye.
Take a motion to approve payroll warrant, 18 PS dated 10/28/2020, and 20 PS dated 11/11/2020.
I'll move.
Move by Ellen. Second by Trista. All in favor?
Aye.
And Dr. Williams, you have some home education plans?
We do.
Okay.
They're in the packet, names to approve.
Take a motion to approve the home education plans on the attached list. Dr. Williams and the superintendent have recommended approval of these home education plans.
I'll move.
Move by Ellen?
Second.
Second by Trista. All in favor?
Aye.
Superintendent, anything else?
No, just that information I gave out tonight that should not be discussed. It's for you to take a look at. They're not, it's not a discussion item, it's just concerns and issues, and when you're done with it, you know, shred it up and throw it away.
Ah, thank you.
Thank you.
Take a motion to close the meeting?
Oh, wait, can I just wish everyone a happy Thanksgiving?
Yes.
And happy, healthy, and safe Thanksgiving.
Happy, healthy, safe Thanksgiving, and make good choices, people. Take a motion to close the meeting?
I'll move.
Move by Ellen?
Second.
Second by Amanda. All in favor?
Aye.
Happy Thanksgiving.
Happy Thanksgiving.
Happy Thanksgiving to everybody.
All right.[1738.88]